All right, everyone, we'll get the meeting started. We do have a quorum.
Really good.
Calling the meeting to order just past 6:30 on May 22nd. It's a regular school board meeting here at Castleton Elementary School. Let's first rise for the positions of allegiance. All right, first looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I do want to put in one item within other business number 12. It was brought to my attention that Bonnie Wenahan is no longer interested in doing our, being our recording secretary. We do have a replacement, Becky Armidge, so we're going to look for a motion to approve Becky to assume that role on July 1st. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing nothing further. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the May 8th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any corrections or discussion on those meeting minutes? Hearing nothing. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Public comment. We'll start first with our online audience. If there's anyone attending virtually, please unmute and let us know what your comment might be. Okay, now in person, if there's anyone here who has a public comment, please stand and identify yourself and share your comment or thoughts. Okay, no public comments. Correspondents, Brooke, anything?
Nope.
All right, next we have a student presentation. I guess I will hand it over to Kim for introductions.
I'm going to pop up my PowerPoint. Walter, please. So, we're waiting on the more students that we think are going to join us. We're going to talk today a little bit about our all-school field trip that we had on May 11th, where we went to Lake St. Catherine and pulled invasive species. And we got this idea, actually Fairhaven Grade School was talking about their all-school field trip, and I said, "We should do an all-school field trip." Presented it to the staff, and people were excited about it. And last year, our current third graders went on a field trip to pull invasive species, so it kind of grew from there. Go ahead. Just a couple of shots here. If you want to see all of them, they are on our Facebook page and on the website. Go peruse them. And then, we're going to, go ahead, Walter. Yep. So we have some kindergartners and some fourth graders that are joining us tonight. And I think we will start with you, Adelaide. You want to come up? And Adelaide, if you want to stand right here, this is the best place for you to stand, okay?
Hello, my name is Adelaide. I am a kindergarten student in Miss Morse's class. I had a lot of fun at Lake St. Catherine. I learned that garlic mustard is invasive. That it has white, I learned that it has white flowers on the top. I had fun picking it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Greg. I'm a kindergarten for Miss Morse's. I went to pull, I went to pull from the bottom. We did this so we won't go to earth. I like, I like garlic. Hi, my name is Greg. I'm a kindergarten for Miss Morse's class. I like, we, I like to pick a garlic. We picked this at Lake St. Catherine. We learned, we, we knew that to pull from the bottom. We did this so we won't go to earth. I like, I like the way it got in the ground. Thank you.
All right. And we have props.
Careful, they throw.
Can pass one around.
There you go.
I'm a garlic parrot. At Lake St. Catherine, it was fun picking invasive weeds, and it was a helpful thing to do for the environment around the state park. My classmates and I collected 13 bags of garlic mustard. We all know about ticks, so we are careful to check them often. Only a few students reported having one crawling on them. Mrs. Ray made sure to collect them so they did not get on to anyone else. This trip was worth going on. We stayed safe and had a fun help, had fun helping our community.
Hello, my name is Amber, and I'm the representative for fourth grade. My class loved this field trip. I personally loved hanging out with my friends and helping the environment at the same time. It was a learning experience for us, for all of us. We learned how to identify the garlic mustard plant and rip it out of the ground while making sure we pulled up the roots. Mr. Mason came into our classroom the day before so we could learn all these things. It was very helpful. We wore the appropriate gear to pull these plants, like gloves, a hat, sunglasses. My class had a competition. If we could get more bags, it would have been fun to compete with the whole school. Our class alone collected 13 bags. We all thought that was pretty cool. I really hope we can do it again next year because we've probably prevented a million plants from growing. Thank you for making it possible to go on this trip. I hope we can do it again.
I just have some more pictures up here. Just picked a few here and there. If you just want to, that's Kyle Mason right there. A couple slides down, I'll just talk about it now. He came in the day before and went to every single classroom for about 25 minutes and talked about what we would be doing and tied it, if you keep going, Walter, tied it to our standards. There's, we just put in the kindergarten standards and the fourth grade science standards that we were addressing that day. It was very helpful to have Kyle in our classrooms, and one of the things that was really powerful was he showed us pictures of what the third graders did last year and what it looks like now. It, that was really powerful. We did some amazing work that day, so congratulations to the students, so. Yeah, and thanks to Kyle Mason, who organized the whole thing with us. We debriefed a little bit at the end and found some simple tweaks that we could make to make it even better next year, if we choose to go again next year, which generally feedback was pretty positive, so hopefully we will. Any questions for our presenters? Oh, Jackson's here. Wait, we have one.
I am Jackson. I learned that garlic mustard can kill other plants. And I love to pick all the garlic mustard.
I don't know if we should ask questions for our presenters or more about our project.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Always a fun day outside the classroom, right? Okay, so again, thank you for organizing that for the kids to come in. Or, excuse me, Buildings and Grounds Committee met prior to the meeting. I'll hand it over to the Chair, Peter Stone, for a quick update.
So we had a meeting. Dean from Johnson Control was there to go over energy updates that we can do by saving money to help pay for. So it was just an overall view on what he can offer and what he can do, and potential savings and how all that works. We're going to meet again next month and talk about that and talk about other things that we need to do that he wouldn't have anything to do with these buildings. So that's what our whole meeting was about. Any questions?
Okay, thanks, Peter. And there was also a Policy Committee meeting tonight.
Yes, there was.
Is it you, Tony, who's the lead of that? Is it Julie?
No, it's Tony.
I am. Yep.
We reviewed the student attendance policy, C-7. The Vermont School Boards Association has a new one out where it has some more definitions about truancy, and it has a timeframe for having a truant officer in place by July 1. Our policy was very similar, but this policy is much better, so we would like to warn the new C-7 student attendance policy. So I make a motion.
Second.
Questions or discussion on warning this policy, which would be acted upon next meeting?
Yes.
All right, hearing nothing further. All those in favor of warning and approving?
When will we see a copy of the proposed policy?
It's, it would typically be in the board packet.
Yeah, they don't send it to, they do it after we warn it. Okay.
Right. I mean, could we have it a little earlier so that we have?
Yeah, I can, I can ask Candace to send that out.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing nothing further. All those in favor of approving to warn please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, next we have a job description to approve. It was part of a packet for a school nurse leader. I'm not sure if this is an update or if it's a little bit, we don't have currently, I'll let Brooke explain that.
Yep. So it's updated. We currently have the position. Deb Williams, whose home base is at the high, middle school, high school, currently serves in that position. There, there's a couple tweaks. One of the tweaks is around supervision evaluation and that the school nurse leader would be supervising the nurses in addition to the school principals, so they would be collaborating on those evaluations of the school nurses. So that's the major update.
Didn't we talk about this last meeting too, or?
We talked about it, but I don't think I actually brought the job description. Yep.
I make a motion, we accept the job description for a school nurse leader.
Second.
And is this like an add-on, slithin-based position?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving school nurse leader job description, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, contracts and resignations. There was an attachment, three new contracts and one resignation.
Yep, I'll make a motion to accept contracts for the 23-24 school year for Alyssa McMahon, art teacher, $47,304. Haley Gaddett, elementary school teacher, $47,304 at Benson Village School. And Jennifer Westeby, special education teacher, $51,751 district-wide.
Second.
She'll be at FHU.
What's that, Chris?
She'll be at FHU.
FHU. All right, there's a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion on the contracts? All effective July 1, right?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And one resignation, Julie?
Yep, I make a motion to accept the resignation for Chris Parisau, English teacher from the high school.
Second.
Questions? And again, there was an attachment that he is resigning due to relocation to Florida. He, right?
Yes.
All right, any further questions? Hearing nothing. All those in favor of accepting the resignation, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And I guess Brooke or Chris Benway, can I just ask you guys to give us a quick update on how the staffing search goes?
We're making some progress. I know that we still have at least two professional positions still to fill in special ed and one SLP position. We have a handful of instructional assistant positions that are still open. Some of those just became known to us last week with contracts returning and folks taking other opportunities, but we're making some progress.
We all, we have two elementary education positions open. We don't have any finalists for those yet. They're both at Fairhaven Grade School, fourth and sixth grade. We still have music position, English position, science position, 504, work-based learning, health education. We have quite, we have quite a few positions open in the district, and either we've offered the positions and the candidates have declined, or we're struggling to find applicants. The Southwest Vermont Superintendent's Association met last week with a firm named Blend Consultancy, and it's about working with a company to bring teachers to the United States on J-1 visas. So we are considering that as a, as a Southwest superintendent's region. So right now, this company brings educators from the Philippines. I have spoken with other districts who have used it, and they have said that the candidates are pretty, pretty good, pretty highly qualified, so, and they would be here for two years. So we are looking at that. There's no cost to the district to engage in that.
Can you explain that a little bit more? How is there no cost? Do we have to pay this consulting firm, or we?
No, we do not pay. The individuals, like in the Philippines, are paying the company to place them in the United States, so that's how the company's making their money.
Okay.
So we do not have any cost associated with that. And they take care of the whole J-1 visa process, which is extremely cumbersome, and I would be, yeah, I mean, I would be hard pressed to see our central office doing that process. It takes months. It does take about three months lead time, so basically, I have to agree to start looking on it, at it this week, essentially. But I think it's worth looking at. It doesn't mean we have to hire the person. It means you're go, they're still going through the interview process, and it's the company's job to also find them housing. That's not incumbent upon us either, so. So I think it might be a viable option. I mean, really, we don't have many options right now.
I'll just let you know that I actually, last year and the year before, because we didn't have any candidates for a number of key positions, interviewed a number of people from the Philippines, and it was because of the visa process that we could not hire them. I mean, it was just too, we just didn't have the resources to be able to do it at that time, so, you know, I applaud the Southwest District for looking into that and doing something because I think it's really important. And as you know, the hospital, Rutland Regional Medical Center employs lots of people through that, not through this service necessarily.
Right.
Through J-1 visa programs, though, and they, it's a very successful program, so.
And a lot of the large districts in the United States use the program as well.
Yeah, you can Google it. There's a ton of really interesting stories about, news recently, too.
So that is an option I think we're going to explore. I mean, we do not have any applicants for most of the positions, so. And we're in better shape than our surrounding districts, so.
Okay, thanks for the update. Any questions on staffing? Okay, next on the agenda are some field trip requests. So there's band, and then there's some art field trips. How should we introduce these? Ben, are the organizers here to?
They're not. I have the information.
You have some information? Okay, I'll let you give us an overview then.
Okay, I can start with the art one. So this one is sort of a replacement for the one that was approved of the go-to-New York City company was not comfortable going into the city, so it was a part of the alternative to, it's called Storm King in New Windsor, New York, so a little north of New York City. And on the way back, they wanted to stop at the Bando immersive in Albany. So the agenda is leaving at 6:30 in the morning, returning at 6:30 at night. There's lunch being provided, there's breakfast that has to be taken from the school, so students have it when they arrive around 9 o'clock, or they're going to stop and then arrive at 10 o'clock, so they have a quick stop, do a breakfast, another hour drive to Storm King. It meets the same objectives as the trip was intended to meet in New York City, and I think that's about it. I don't know if there's specific questions I can answer regarding it.
Any questions?
Yep.
No questions, Ben?
Do you want me to move right to the second one?
Yeah, please.
Okay, sure. So the second one is a music trip. It's 7:12, and they are going down to Springfield, Massachusetts. So in Springfield, they have a adjudication, where they perform in front of judges. They'll be recorded, and they get some extensive feedback. And so that was the key goal to this trip, is to do that. Then they wanted to, at the celebration of the process, go right next door to Six Flags, which is not Springfield, but I think it's in Agawam, right in the same area, where they would do a little celebration of learning this year, as a celebration of the process they went through before. This is an early leave, 5:30 a.m. leave, to get there on time and a return at 10:30. Both of these trips are on the same day, by the way, they're both June 9. And the one thing about this trip that's a little bit different is there is a piece of this that has a cost to the students that if you need to kind of come back to or look into, I certainly can. The budget for this, through the band, will cover everything except for about $50 per student on the trip to Six Flags.
All right, are there any questions for Ben on either of these field trip requests?
Do you want to do them both together?
Yeah, please.
I make a motion to accept a field trip for the middle school band and for, middle high school band and for the art club, our art kids?
912, yes.
912 art for New York City. It's actually not New York City anymore. Oh, sorry, you're right. It's New Windsor.
All right, Peter's made a motion. Is there a second?
I'm happy to second it. I just had a question.
Is that a second?
Yes, I said I'm happy to second it.
Questions?
Yes. Ben, are all of those students going to do an adjudication?
Yes.
There's 48 of them going, and they're all going to do it?
Yep.
Oh, wow.
That's the primary purpose is for them.
Uh huh, yep. Thank you.
All right, any further questions or discussion on the field trip requests? Hearing nothing. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All right, next, strategic plan, year-end report. I'm assuming Casey, you're going to take a lead on that? No?
I can.
Well, I think, I think we're going to tag team it.
He's finding out about this now, right?
Oh, no, I was just reading through it, seeing, oh, what? Got to make sure, just one agenda item ahead. So the last time we visited this document, we were in the Fairhaven Grade School library, and there is a lot here, and I think we wanted to make certain that we touched upon it again and kind of gave another status update. And I would say there are links abound in here, so you may or may not have found your way to something. Also, you know, you may have questions that kind of divert in different directions, and so you're welcome to contact myself, Chris, Brooke, or Chris, even Walt, to dig deeper into this, but I, we did want to just follow up with what we had shared at Fairhaven Grade School with kind of a mid-year report, and then included, I think for the first time, just in the colored bit there, because we were talking about how to maybe allow this to stand out, some implications, so. Color selections, I can't recall if I selected those or not, but nonetheless, we gave a green for things that we felt we completed, yellow for things that are in progress, and a blue for things that we hadn't started yet. Something we noticed in going through this as a team is that there are some items on here that are just annual practice for us, and so we thought about how we could do a better job of, you know, building into agendas, just to report on something, or how something that's in here is just a part of a report that I need to give on an update on a policy. And so how we could, moving forward, maybe streamline this a little bit better, so it didn't kind of speak in so many ways on one piece of paper.
Well, and I think some of the other, the other pieces to point out are, some of these things are ongoing, and we may have written completed, but for example, plan and host activities that will occur throughout the school year to build connections between our families and our school, supporting college and career readiness. You don't just complete it this year and we're done. We don't need to do that again. So it's kind of, it's, it's ongoing. The other piece to point out that our strategic plan is a five-year plan, this is year one of a five-year plan, so I'm pretty pleased with the progress and really thankful to all of the staff for their hard work in regards to this, because I think we, you know, are making some good progress, and there's a lot of good things that are happening around the district. So I don't know if people, I wasn't going to go through this line by line, but overall, if folks have questions?
Well, you're thinking of questions. I can, oh, go ahead.
I just want to say, I think this is a document, I like all the hyperlinks taking me to relevant information, and I appreciate, yeah, I just appreciate all the work that went into this. And one thing I did have a question about was under, oh, let's see, Initiative 1B, it says that the Slate Valley is looking into a pilot, a supervision and evaluation model.
Mm-hmm.
And is that something that is like another company's being outsourced to provide, or is it just?
No, I'm actually, it's written on my notebook here, because that would, that's going to be an agenda item at the next board meeting, so.
Okay, well, you don't need to go into detail.
Okay, okay, no, we're, we've worked with a consultant on that, and there's been a committee with the union and administration that we've, so we've worked on developing a new model that we're going to roll out as a pilot and then implement in '24, '25. So next year would be a pilot year with just some volunteer teachers.
Okay, and then who's, what's the evaluation process right now, out of curiosity? Are there people within the district that go to other classrooms to evaluate instructions?
The administration evaluates the teaching, the teaching staff, but it's on, if you're in your first So I'm pretty pleased with the progress and really thankful to all of the staff for their hard work in regards to this, because I, I think we, you know, are making some good progress and there's a lot of good things that are happening around the district. So I don't know if people, I wasn't gonna go through this line by line, but overall if folks have questions?
While you're thinking of questions, I can, oh, go ahead.
I just want to say, I think this is a document. I like all the hyperlinks taking me to relevant information. And I appreciate, yeah, I just appreciate all the work that went into this. And one thing I did have a question about was under, oh, let's see, Initiative 1B, um, it says that the Slate Valley is looking into a pilot, a supervision and evaluation model. And is that something that is like another company's being outsourced to provide, or is it just?
No, I'm actually, it's written on my, um, notebook here because that would, that's gonna be an agenda item at the next board meeting, so.
Well, we don't need to go into detail.
Okay, okay, no. We're, we've worked with a consultant on that and there's been a committee with the union and administration that we've, so we've worked on developing a new model that we're gonna roll out as a pilot and then implement in '24, '25. So next year would be a pilot year with just some volunteer teachers.
Okay. And then who's, what's the evaluation process right now, out of curiosities? Are there people within the district that go to other classrooms to evaluate instructions?
The administration evaluates the teach, the teaching staff, but it's on, if you're in your first two years, you're evaluated each year of your first two years, but other than that, it's a four-year rotation. So, um, so we have some things built in and the administrative team has been doing training with the University of Washington, Jeepers. Some of us started that before COVID on inquiry cycles for, for teacher growth. So it's a very different, it's a very different, um, method that's more growth-focused.
And more reflective.
And more reflective about.
Where do you think you are with this and setting your goal and then going through, you know, kind of a process to have someone observe something and then have some, where are you in terms of avergia, doing something else next? Where do you think you still need additional support? Providing some support, then coming back again and watching the lesson or what have you, and then getting that reflection at the end. And so we'd been exposed to it and then we decided to not let that kind of just fall by the wayside as COVID had set in and, and wanted to reestablish kind of a commitment to how it is we would go about, really with this mindset of coaching each other and kind of from that positive about how we can all improve as opposed to thinking about evaluation as something that could potentially be putative, that you're using it simply to, you know, correct something as opposed to we're all trying to improve.
And next year, too, the plan would be for me to work with the consultant and a committee to revise the principal evaluation system as well to mirror the teacher. So it's more about reflective practicing, growing in your craft.
Thank you.
And I would just say to the not-started pieces, there is one thing in particular here in regards to a food truck, which was totally something I was trying to get going and it won't appear again. So I'll own that completely, that I kind of used this document a little bit to be dreamy and thought, wow, imagine if we could cook the food, sell, you know, anyway. But just wanted to put it out there if you were like, why are there not even any comments next to that? Like mid-year, it was one of those, sounded good, I had high hopes. We had hired someone who had received a grant in another district and I caught wind of that and I was like, oh, yeah. And then the, the agency event, it said that the grant wasn't allowed to follow the person that it needed to stay in the school district, so that never got off the ground. So, in case you were curious.
And the other not-started, does it take a plan for that one?
Um, the portrait of the, there's a, our portrait of a graduate. Yeah, it's just.
OP stuff.
We just haven't had the capacity. I mean, I think we, we have feedback gathered and I think we need to just work on the, on the process. We just, the capacity issue, really.
And that was when we were talking earlier, Julie, what you had shared and I had shared with Brooke is we have to get ourselves there to do that work.
Um, and then the other piece that I wanted to point out, too, it's on staff retention and it actually has to do with my goals that you all gave me for the district around staff retention. I am working with a company, it's actually out of Australia. I think we have our launch meeting tomorrow. So, um, around, it's called People Bench and it's around, um, one of your goals was around making sure that this year we had some baseline data around staff culture. And so I'll talk more about it, you know, later on at another meeting, but this, this program or this survey will give us some of that baseline data that we can build on and it will help us develop action plans around staff culture and retention. So, and I mean, obviously, every school district's struggling with retention, but what can we, what can we do here that we can control? So, um, so those are some things that we're working on.
All right, folks, any other questions on the strategic plan? Ongoing. Thanks for the input. Thanks for the work. All right, thanks for the update. All right, number 12, other business. As I mentioned, Bonnie's gonna be stepping aside. You sure?
Positive. Done it a lot of years, Tim.
You have? I was thinking, I mean, I've been doing this for over 10. I think you've been taking minutes for every one of those 10 years, so thanks for your efforts. So we do have a, do we have to like accept a resignation or just a point of replacement?
I think we just, yeah, just, yeah, you can accept Bonnie's resignation and a point of replacement.
Only from the minutes of this meeting.
Just, yeah, just from the minutes. No, from, yeah, be careful.
I gave him a scare the other day when I.
So again, Bonnie stepping away, Becky Armitage stepping in, effective 7-1. Does someone want to make a motion to both accept the resignation and appoint Becky Armitage as the replacement?
Make a motion to accept Bonnie's resignation and Becky's appointment starting July 1.
As recording secretary.
As recording secretary.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and again, thank you very much, Bonnie.
Thanks.
Executive session, is anything needed tonight, Brooke?
There is not for once.
Yes.
And no other board responsibilities this week?
Um, no.
No hearings, no other issues?
No, there was Klinebee, but we averted that.
All right, so we're on the hook for a couple weeks from today, right?
Yes.
All right, what's on your to-do list for agenda items?
Um, well, we need to appoint truant officers at the next meeting, since you're gonna hopefully adopt a policy that requires you to do so before July 1. We have the bid opening for the middle school project and that occurs at the meeting. So that's gonna be a new process for us all. I would like to discuss a bit about supervision evaluation, whether that's Casey and I discussing it, or our consultant, Jackie Wilson, can be there. I'll figure that out and hopefully we have a lot of contracts for you to approve.
Tax anticipation.
And tax anticipation, yep.
Do we have any, how do we prepare for truancy officers? Are we just gonna be throwing random names out there? They're employees, they're SROs?
Typically, they're our SRO, so I, yeah, I'll, I'll bring that to you in the form of a recommended motion. It's usually Ed and Pete.
He's a job support chair.
Truancy?
Oh. Oh, I'm sure they would be happy to let Tim do it.
Yeah, I know that there's been a lot of emphasis on truancy this year, right? The state is kind of cracking back down in the aftermath year of COVID to get back on track with attendance?
Uh, yes, but I think that's presented some challenges and I'm happy to talk about Rutland County's truancy process and the challenges that it's presenting for the district. In fact, as a Southwest Superintendent's Group, we are gonna be writing a joint letter to the states around those challenges. For example, having to send a certified letter for every absence, you know, mile, I don't say milestone, it's not really a milestone, but five, seven, 10. The, the cost and the, and the work that's involved with that, to have parents not pick up the letters is pretty astronomical. And the state's attorney's office does not accept any truancy affidavits after April 1st. So that's, you know, you've got two and a half months of school left where kids, you know, can be truant. So we, we've had some really, um, some real challenges with the process, so.
They want a certified letter sent to the parents?
So if your kid, child has missed five days of school, you need to, we need to send you a certified letter.
In a row or in total?
Total.
In total?
In total. It's just the whole pro, I mean.
So a regular letter's not good enough?
No.
Okay.
They won't accept a truancy affidavit unless we approve that we've sent certified letters. And so just the amount, I mean, principals can tell you the amount of work, especially for the high school. In fact, we've collected the data and I've tried to collect the data throughout Rutland County on that. It's ridic, it's ridiculous. And not that, you know, truancy isn't a huge problem, because it is, but on the other end, the state's attorney's office is not accepting those affidavits and nothing's really happening as a result. So it's a very, the process just isn't working. Is that fair to say?
All right, any other agenda items, any other business? Hearing nothing, I could motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks everyone. Have a good morning, everybody.